I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to recognitions, we have Barry Oldhausen from TOS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Barry Oldhausen with the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents. And amongst the weighty things I know that you're going to have to deal with through any board meeting, I like to start out with, give you something that's going to, it's kind of a feel-good moment. Say a couple of things about your superintendent here, Kelly Johnson. To quote Opie Taylor from the Andy Griffith Show, "It's barely possible, it's barely possible" that you all, as board members, may have noticed that Kelly is passionate about what she does. Kelly has strong opinions about the way education needs to operate. Kelly loves Clinton City Schools. And Kelly gets very upset when people do not put the best interest of kids first. Now, all that said, now, those are things I know you all know. What you may not know about Kelly is her influence statewide. She's, of course, she's Chair of the East Tennessee, or just outgoing, Chair of the East Tennessee Study Council, but beyond that, she served on the Executive Committee that meets with the Commissioner on a regular basis. Kelly is a voice, and this is no exaggeration, hers is a voice when any complex or controversial topic comes up, all superintendents in Tennessee want to know, well, what did Kelly say about it? So when she speaks, people listen, and that is from a statewide perspective, I'm not, I'm not assuming anything here in Clinton, Kelly, but, but certainly from a statewide perspective and from all her peers, such that Kelly was selected as one of the eight finalists for the Tennessee Superintendent of the Year. She is the Superintendent of the Year for the East Region. And that being said, Kelly, I would like to present you with a plaque and to honor you on this occasion. And Board, I want to commend you on your ongoing and supportive relationship of your superintendent. Obviously, this is kind of a textbook situation for what a healthy superintendent board ought to look like. So, Kelly?
You didn't, you didn't tell them that my mouth gets me in trouble, too.
We're going to have to turn our backs to you because I will get tired if I don't get a good picture of Kelly and me, so.
And you have to be centered.
Yes.
For those of you all who don't know Barry, he is Paul Stacey, the Clinton's organization of school superintendents. These are all of our new Clinton City. He will, but Barry is highly respected. Everything that he said about me, he is like 10 times on steroids, what he has said, so well-respected and just we love him at TOS. He's a good positive force for us when life gets hard. So, thank you, Barry. He has traveled from Nashville just to be here with us, so we're going to send him on back to Nashville.
After one more picture.
One more picture for us, just to make sure. Okay.
Because I was in the way.
One, two, three. Thank you. Safe travels, Barry. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Barry. Moving on, we have recognition of our Otto Brown Scholarship recipients tonight.
So each year, as you know, for the past several years, Kathy Brown, who is a treasured community member in Clinton, has established an Otto Brown Scholarship that has consecutively awarded scholarships to existing Clinton City teachers to further their education and to improve their instructional effectiveness across the district. And so we are pleased to announce this year, we've actually started kind of a new era of this with the Grow Your Own that the state is supporting. We had to get kind of creative in how we could use these scholarship monies to assist Clinton City Schools teachers. And UT has begun a new literacy specialist endorsement. And so three of our current employees are recipients of the Otto Brown Scholarship, and they are receiving that endorsement completely free. And then we partnered with UT on some additional funds to where they got their textbooks and any ancillary things are being paid for as well. So I would like to call up our three recipients, and we'll just meet right down here at the bottom of the, bottom of the ramp, but I'd like to call up Kelly Atkins, Abby Kidwell, and Taylor Bailey to come up and receive the Otto Brown.
And they began, your classes began in August, August, and they're intense from what I hear, we're learning a lot. So, Taylor, congratulations.
Yes. Back just a little bit. And one more. One, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
Congratulations. She can support you all. We're grateful for Kathy.
I'm surprised Kathy's not here.
And moving on, we have our new staff members that are with us tonight.
So as always, we have a couple of new faces in Clinton City Schools every year, and we used to introduce them to you in August, and they would come in very glassy-eyed with bags under their eyes and very tired because as a new employee, whether you're a new teacher or a novice teacher, that's just, that's, August is hard, isn't it, guys? So we decided to bump that till September to where they could actually remotely breathe with their head above water. I know that they are still swimming hard and we're still trying to settle into routines, but once again, as I says, Jesus loves us at Clinton City Schools, and he has given us lots and lots of wonderful new employees this year that have already integrated themselves into the high expectation culture that we have at Clinton City Schools. They are fighting hard for kids every single day, and I can say that we are very, very pleased with each one of these individuals that you are getting ready to meet, that they have joined the Clinton City Schools family. So instead of me introducing them this time, we are going to actually trade our principal reports tonight, and I'm going to ask the principals to come up and introduce each one of them. And then, guys, if you all can be prepared for your three-minute speech to introduce yourselves to the school board, we would greatly appreciate that. Just kidding. But we are going to make you smile for a picture. You will have to smile for a picture, but you don't have to say anything. So principals, we'll start with Clinton Elementary. Jenna Sharp is under the weather sick today, so Abby Kidwell is going to come up. And as Abby introduces you all, if you will just come up and stand with Abby so that they can see who you are, and then what we will do is we will get a quick picture of you all with Abby before we ask you to sit back down. So Abby, if you want to introduce your new faces.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to start over here. I'm going to start with Mr. Joe French. We have had Joe French with us for the past three years, working as an instructional assistant with some of our friends that have some very particular needs, and he has deeply invested in relationships here and is now leveraging that in his classroom as one of our new CDC teachers. And with that, with those relationships coming in strong, he's already started on instruction with getting to know kids individually and working on those academic goals. This individual brings so much energy to that classroom and kids adore him. Also, here, I'm called Mr. French Frye. We don't shy away from that. That is exactly who he is. And we are glad he is doing the Grow Your Own program and finishing up in December, correct?
Yes.
So he's, it's job embedded, and he is embedded. Let's just say, we are learning a lot and learning a lot together, but we're glad to have him.
And he actually is our very first job, truly job embedded. We've done Grow Your Own where they remain a TA and, you know, get their degree, but he is truly our very, very first job embedded, and we have had to figure out a whole lot together, but it has been a great experience for him, and it's been so neat just to watch him flourish and just excel.
Yep. Very reflective and good for feedback and coaching. It's been great. Next, we have, and we'll go this way, next, we have Wendy Edwards. Come on down. Wendy Edwards was at North Clinton last year, working with Shannon Cook as an instructional assistant and finishing up her degree, master's degree, and now we have snagged her from North. Sorry, Monica, we love her so much. And she is serving in our other CDC classroom as the instructional assistant there, and on Monday, we'll transition to the lead teacher in there as Olivia's going on maternity leave. And we cannot speak enough to the calm, reflective nature that Wendy brings to a classroom, that Wendy brings when she's working individually with kids, and just that she is just a calm presence to have around, is very reflective and very intentional about what she does with each of the kids in her room, and we are glad to have her and excited to continue to grow with her as she transitions to the lead role for the next little bit. And coming on up, we have Alex Billings. Alex Billings is one of our new instructional assistants. Alex is a mama in our building, but now she's, we're lucky enough to have her onboard, working with our RTI groups. And the number-one thing you will hear, when you hear about Alex, is that she is, if you need me, I will do it, and she means it wholeheartedly when it comes to serving. That is where her heart is, and she is doing that. She did that as a sub last year with us, and now she's onboard every day and working with small groups. She has two littles that are with us in first grade and in fourth grade, so we've been honored and privileged to live on those kiddos as well. And in the same breath, I'm going to ask Brandy Warwick to come up, who is also a mama that we have stolen to make an employee here. We just like to keep them in-house. Brandy is joining us this year as an instructional assistant, too. She has a little one in first grade and fifth grade, and she is the same hard-working attitude that we see with our instructional assistants of, I am learning a lot, and I am serving a lot, and I'm happy to do it. Guys, these are the, the hands and feet behind the cafeteria, and that is a lot right here. They, they serve in our, with our kindergartners in the cafeteria after pouring into them in small groups, so we're super thankful for both of them joining our team. And then, last but not least, we have Ellie Martin, I want to say Ellie Shaw, because when we started with Ellie, she was Ellie Shaw when she joined us at the end of February. She was a student at the time with Tennessee Tech and started with us, finished her student teaching with us as the teacher for Kaylee Houck's maternity leave in third grade. So she just jumped right on in, finished her student teaching as the lead teacher in that room, so we got to grow her in our Clinton City capacity in that regard, and then we just kept her and have bumped her into fourth-grade math this year, and she has taken off. She had relationships with the kids already coming in there. She is bringing insight into PLCs and is reflective of what she has just learned right off the press in college, and she's one of those that you, you probably going to forget that she's new because she's just mature and already stepped right on into that role. So we're super excited. She is Ellie Martin. She did, she did get married, so I'm going to have a hard time remembering that, but yep, these are our new faces at Clinton Elementary School.
And then Ellie is also a Clinton Elementary alumni, correct?
Yes.
So she's one of our own that came back. So, congratulations to each of you.
We keep them, we keep the parents, we just, that's just how we do business here. You want to stay, what is it, Hotel California? That's what we like to stay around here.
That's right.
So, this is Clinton Elementary, and we are super honored to have them with us, and we want to introduce them to you all.
Welcome. We are so glad that you are here. Abby, if you can get them to stand at the bottom of the ramp where we are Otto Browned, and then if Jamie can grab a quick picture of them, that would be fabulous.
One, two, three. Good.
Welcome to Clinton City Schools.
And if you all will have a seat, I will introduce you to the board once we've introduced you all to the board. So next, we'll just go in alphabetical order, so we're not showing any preference whatsoever, but North Clinton, come on up, Ms. Monica Ryle.
So my number of new staff is directly proportional to the size of my building. So I have two brand-new teachers in, in my building right now. First one is Skylah Currington, if you'll come on up. She is from Clinton. She went to Tennessee Tech and got her bachelor's degree in elementary education with an additional endorsement in ESL, and she's currently taking coursework to work toward an endorsement in six-through-12 English.
Well, why would you want to use that? I mean, once you come to Clinton City, you don't ever leave Clinton City. You don't know that?
We have a sixth grade in Clinton City, so see, there's that. She, she has had done lots of volunteer work here locally at the Clinton Library, it runs a community college as STEM Camp, the Oak Ridge Institute for Science and Education, STEM Experiences with students there. She did her student teaching at Linden Elementary in Oak Ridge, and that teacher went on a leave, and she became the interim teacher there in fourth grade to finish that year out, and she's currently teaching second grade with Ms. Emma Denton, and she's kind of, signed up to be the co-lead of our STEM Night Committee, so we're excited to see what she brings to that, especially with all of her background work in STEM activities. And then we have Emily Moore. Emily is from Cincinnati, Ohio. She went to University of Tennessee Knoxville, and she got her bachelor's degree in psychology in Spanish, her master's in elementary education with an, with an endorsement in ESL. She also tutored students and coached girls volleyball with the Emerald Youth Foundation, and she moved away from her entire family to take a job at Clinton City Schools at North Clinton Elementary and is currently teaching fifth grade. And she's working this, this year with students to prepare second harvest backpacks, she does the morning announcements with students, she is a Water Tower Community Lead, and she is working with our Assistant Principal, Donna Howard, on a student leadership program where they are going to be supporting some recognition for staff members. So I want to say that these ladies have both established strong relationships with our staff, our students, our families. They always have the most incredibly positive attitude and a smile on their face, no matter what the day brings, and sometimes the day brings lots of fun things, and they have come in, they are such great reflective thinkers in PLCs. They absolutely love and adore our North Clinton students, and that is one of the big things that we have to have at North Clinton Elementary, is you have to have an absolute love and heart for all things little bitty. And sometimes, Emily, she's got some big girl things, big boy and girl things to deal with as well, but really and truly, I'm just so incredibly proud of them, and they've just come in, they're, they're one of us now, and so they can never leave.
Thank you. Welcome. We are so glad that you are here. All right, you will stand with Monica for a picture. Very good. Thank you. And Ms. Bunsstil, if you want to come up and introduce us to new South Clinton faces.
Absolutely. It's okay.
All right, so I'm super excited for you to meet these new members of our South Clinton Elementary School family. We will start with Taylor Collenberg. So Taylor, come on up. So Taylor graduated from Tennessee Tech University in 2021 with her bachelor's in special education, so she is currently our special education teacher at South Clinton. Prior to coming to Clinton City Schools, she taught for three years in Knox County. And I asked each one of them to prepare me to speak about them tonight, to let me know what their why was. Why did you decide to become a teacher? And this is what Taylor said. "I decided to become a teacher after being a peer tutor in middle and high school. I loved taking part in Special Olympics all throughout school and even into college. I wanted to help lessen the stereotypes of individuals with disabilities and help give them not only academic skills but also life skills. Each child deserves the opportunity to learn and grow, and they will with the right supports and accommodations. There's nothing like getting to celebrate with a student after beating a goal that has been worked on for so long." And if you know our mission statement that we say every morning on morning announcements, it's, "Everyone grows every day," so she fits right in with that growth mindset. So welcome, Taylor. And next is Maddie Grace Hensley. Maddie Grace is our new first-grade teacher at South Clinton Elementary. She graduated from Tennessee Wesleyan University in 2022. She student-taught in McMinn County at Niota Elementary and in fifth grade for five weeks in kindergarten, and she taught kindergarten in Knox County for two years at Beaumont Magnet Academy. And she said, "I come from a long line of teachers, so I guess you could say, 'Teaching is in my blood.'" And what that tells me is, she's grown up with it, she was a teacher's kid, she's spent the long nights in the classroom, she knows the good, the bad, and the ugly, and she still wants to be a teacher. So I think that says a lot about her. So welcome, Maddie Grace. Next is Jada Sliger. Jada is our new kindergarten teacher. She graduated from the University of Tennessee Knoxville in 2024. She had a year-long internship at Bricky McLeod in kindergarten, and she worked for four years at a preschool through college and has lots of pre-K student teaching experiences. And she said, "I decided to become a teacher because I've grown up working with children and have loved it from the very beginning. We can learn so much from them, and I love kindergarten in particular because I get to help lay a foundation that will carry them throughout their lives." And so I have to say, when we, when I interviewed her, and she was talking about her kindergarten students that she had in her class, she teared up when she talked about the growth and how it was so amazing to get to see these kids grow and learn so much. So she truly has a heart for kindergarten, and I think it takes a special person to be a kindergarten teacher, so she's a great fit. So welcome, Jada. And last but not least, we have Kalen Gibson. So Kalen is a Tennessee Tech graduate as well. She graduated this past May, and actually, she did an internship at Clinton Elementary, and then we stole her to be our new third-grade teacher with Molly Romero's. She started her student teaching at Loudoun Elementary in fifth grade and then switched to that interim position at Clinton Elementary in fifth grade. She came in right when testing was beginning, so she got to experience all that testing stress. And she said, "I wanted to become a teacher, to be a teacher I never had, and to be one of the for-sure constants a student has in their life." So she has a heart for her kids, and it's evident already. So one thing I have to say about all these people standing up here is, one question that I asked them in the interview was, "How do you feel about having fun at school?" And they all said, "I'm in." And they are. They're out there having fun every Friday on Fun Fridays with a smile on their face, so they are a perfect fit, and they just complete our South Clinton family. So welcome to you guys.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Center. Yep, to the left, to the left. All right, better. Okay. One, two, three. Do you want to take a second? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so real quick, before we dismiss you all to go home and get ready for tomorrow, I know that you all are exhausted, so you're welcome to stay for the lovely board meeting that will continue, but we do know that you would, you have some things to do at home as well. I want to introduce you to your Clinton City School Board so that you know the level of support that you have walking in to Clinton City Schools. And if you are coming from another district, then you know how special Clinton City Schools is. If you are not, if you're starting your career with us, you will quickly learn how special Clinton City Schools is. But part of what makes us special is the six individuals, one is not with us today, but that make up the school board, because they come to this table every month, and they don't represent a region, they don't represent a school, they represent every single kid and teacher that, that is a part of Clinton City Schools. And you will see that while their backgrounds are different, our philosophy is the same, that we put kids first, that we support teachers, and that we support kids. And you will see that in their decisions, they are responsible for making all the policies and procedures that we go by, and you will see that when we hold discussions, kids and teachers are always at the center of our focus. And if you've been in other districts, that's not always the case, and you will also find that they all get along very, very well, and that, we are very, very thankful for that. And Barry is laughing because, Barry, that is not always the case, is it? So, not with us today. Oh, see. So Curtis Isabelle is not with us, so we're all going to do a group hug before we leave because that's just what we're going to do, we'll sing Kumbaya. But Bear, Curtis Isabelle is on the end. He's a lawyer in town and has had children go through Clinton City Schools, but is a big fan of Clinton City Schools, and so he actually had to attend something for his child tonight, is not with us, but you will find him to be a tremendous support. Joey Smith is a local realtor in Clinton, and he is known as our historian in Clinton. He knows a lot about buildings and houses and history. He also knows a lot about ghosts, and he loves to take ghost trails and stories, which we need for him to do for Clinton City sometime. But he has two children that are in Clinton City Schools, and so he brings a great parental perspective to the board. Then we have Merle Price, who does love to give hugs, and, but Merle has, actually did her career in Clinton City Schools, was a kindergarten teacher, Jada, and she also was the principal at North Clinton Elementary School for several years, and so she brings just, if you know Merle, she is just a straight shooter, very level-headed, down-to-earth, but she brings a great perspective because she knows what it's like to walk in your own shoes, and she knows the hard work that takes place every single day and where your heart is, and so she's a good grounding force for us. Then we have Dr. Tim Bible. He is a local dentist in our area. He has, I think he may be the longest-serving board member currently right now, and so he is a local dentist. His kids went through Clinton City Schools, his wife teaches for Clinton City Schools, so if you're Clinton Elementary, Vicky Bible is his better half. But he has a long history of serving as a board member and actually brings that perspective of, he's seen it all, he's done it all from a board member, and he brings a very levelhead. Whenever I need somebody to like listen to me and kind of push back if I'm on the right track or if I'm not on the right track, he is able to do that for me just because of his many years serving on the board. Then we have Lori Wilson. Lori Wilson is a, she does loans for housing, and she is masterful at that, she works all the time, but she also is probably one of the biggest advocates for, for Clinton. She, she and Joey have formed a Clinton Strong Group that sole purpose is to promote the good things that are happening in both Clinton City Schools and also Clinton Middle and Clinton High School, which are Anderson County schools. She will, she will lay down her life for things that she believes in, and she believes in fighting for kids, and so her passion is evident, and she has just been a wonderful addition to our school board. And then we have KK Meredith with us, and KK Meredith has just a little history with Clinton City Schools, just little, just a little bit. She is a Clinton City alumni, all of her children went through Clinton City Schools, she has grandchildren in Clinton City Schools, and her daughter teaches in Clinton City Schools. And so she just brings the, she can bring the parent perspective, the grandparent perspective, the mommy-of-an-employee perspective, and she also just is very, very passionate about the work that we do and is eager to support you. So this is your school board that behind the scenes, once a month and every single day, is out in the community fighting for you, so I wanted you to know who they are. So with that said, welcome to Clinton City Schools. We are so glad that you all are here. We are going to, at this time, let you, so it's not an awkward moment with you trying to sneak out, we are just going to take a quick breath, and we're going to let you stand up and exit the building and go forth with your evening, but know that we are excited that you are here.
Do we have any agenda input for tonight? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented. Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Ms. Johnson, I believe.
Well, I guess you can see that Scott Ray is not with us tonight. Well, I guess you can see that Scott Ray is not with us tonight. And so you get the joy of Kelly giving the financial report, which could be really interesting. But he did give me cheat notes, and he did a memo for you. So I'm just going to highlight one or two things, and then we'll let the memo stand as his report. But a couple of things as we look at our three different funds. As of today, all of our accounts receivables from last fiscal year have been collected. The majority of the collection during the month of July for general purpose fund would have been the 2324 TISA final payment, that's our new BEP payment, and then also April sales tax. So all of that would have been recognized as revenue for last fiscal year. Generally, he says the state and local funds collected in July were earned in the prior year and accrued for the year-end of June 30th financial statements. So state revenue recognition for 2425 fiscal year will resume in August. So we'll get our first TISA check in August. And then local revenue recognition with sales tax and property tax will not resume on our end until September. So when we're looking at general purpose fund, most of the expenditures for July were administrative payroll and custodial and facilities in nature, as well as a couple of technology purchases to get our Chromebooks and those ready for the new year. With our federal projects funds, most of the expenditures for July were just administrative payroll, and then we did pay to send all of our new employees to Capturing Kids Hearts, which is a three-day training that kind of orients them to the philosophy that we have of love them first in Clinton City Schools. And then with our school nutrition department, the expenditures in July were for administrative payroll. And then we did, as you all saw in a previous report, we transitioned our point-of-sale system to a new program called Meal Magic, and so we paid for that program. Other than that, Scott Ray sent me a note to say that the financial is pretty boring and nothing is outstanding at this point, which is a good thing.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Kelly? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our July financial report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Kim Babbel?
Yes.
Merle Cross?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business requiring action, we need two delegates at the TSBA. So Curtis isn't here, so he's our first one.
Aren't you glad you came, KK?
Joey and I did it last year.
Did you two do it last year?
We did it one year.
I think it was Joey and I last year.
I enjoyed it. I'll do it.
You want to do it again? Okay, we have Joey. Is anybody else?
It's pretty juicy, you know, sitting there with the other school board members.
Somebody does, I'm going to tell you.
Yeah.
All right. Would anybody else like to do it? Joey and Curtis, who would like to be an alternate?
Since KK, I can tell that you.
I'll be the alternate.
You'll be the alternate? All right. So we have Joey Curtis, and KK is an alternate. I'll entertain that as a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we have our revised school board policies.
So we just have one policy to bring before you today. It is just a revision of our testing policy. They really make us revise this and update it on an annual basis. There's not really anything of significant value that changes with that. It's just making sure that we're in line with Tennessee code annotated, but it does need your approval tonight.
All right. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on first and second reading to approve school board revised policies as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. One note, we'll move on into information, items for information. Our October meeting will be early with the fall break, I believe, coming up. And so just make a note on your calendars that it will be the first week in October instead of the second. We do have the leadership and the TSBA convention that's coming up in November. And I assume you've heard from everybody thus far, Kim, on the, okay. And with that, we'll move on into our director's report.
Okay, a couple of updates. I think you have the copy already in front of you, but we are fast and furious into the school year. We do have, I mean, we know that we are blessed with an abundance of support from outside organizations, but I do want to publicly thank a few people who have done some special donations. The Clinton Wednesday Club actually donated $500 to each one of our schools. Kathleen Jones actually went around and awarded that check to each one of not only the three Clinton City Schools, but also to Clinton Middle School and Clinton High School as well. So we, I think Merle's a part of that club, and they do a fundraiser every year, and they are very good to support the local schools. So we certainly appreciate that. We also received two additional anonymous donations. I think Monica talked about the $1,000 anonymous donation to the North Clinton Library. And then we also received a $9,100 donation with the request that 3,000 of that go towards the new auditorium renovation, and the rest of it go to North Clinton Elementary School. And so we thank those two anonymous donors for continuing to support our system. Then Tracy Burton and Amy Tomlinson. Tracy Burton is our STEM instructor at Clinton Elementary School, and Amy Tomlinson is our librarian at Clinton Elementary School. They received a $1,000 grant from ISO Tech, and that actually one of our parents, am I pronouncing that correctly, Abby? One of our parents actually works there and told Abby about the grant, and so Abby collaborated with them and wrote that grant for $1,000. And so they are actually using that for the filament for our brand-new 3D printers and our 3D ink pens. So each student in Clinton Elementary School will have some sort of project throughout the year that involves either the 3D ink pen or the 3D printer. And when I walked in there today, they're working on, some of the upper grades will be doing a jack-o'-lantern on the Tinkercad, the computer program, and then they'll be putting an LED light down into what they create with a 3D printer. So it looks super fun. So we appreciate that. And then Leanne, since they didn't do reports today, I wanted to share that they have done a monthly STEM challenge. It's a family monthly STEM challenge as part of their parental involvement plan. They started it last year, I believe. And so this year, they've upped the game, and they are getting area organizations and donors to help entice participation in the STEM grant. And so Fox Toyota, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leanne, but Fox Toyota is actually sponsoring this month's STEM challenge, which is they have to take a balloon and create a car that moves by itself for three feet. And then the winner of this STEM challenge, what is it, they get a $100 gift card?
A $100 Cinemark gift card.
So there we go.
And they're actually, so Fox Toyota is going to come and judge that competition.
So we're just, I love the involvement, and the principals are all working so hard on bringing the community into our schools to see the fabulous things that are happening. So many thanks to Fox Toyota for that. We held grandparents or friends and family lunches this week at all three schools, and you are seeing everybody out there smile because it was such a good experience. The food was amazing, the participation was great. At Clinton Elementary School, we restructured a little bit because of the size of the school and the size of the cafeteria. When we have family gatherings in one day, we found that it's not really conducive to a pleasant experience because you're crowded, it's loud, and so they have divided it into two special days, and K through 2 was this time, and then in November, 3 through 6. And we were able to spread out that time, spread out the people in the cafeteria, and the atmosphere was just so much more pleasant. Parents were able to hear their child talk, they were able to have room and space, they got through their line quickly, we weren't backed up out the door. It just was a great experience. North Clinton, I believe, we had the highest participation that we've ever seen.
It was close to 95. I think it was like 92 or something that ate, but I think it was even closer to the 95-100 range for just visitors that came and sat with students even if they didn't eat lunch.
So they already, with pre-K and kindergarten, they already had to back up lunches 10 minutes because some of the pre-K and kindergartners were bringing like five and six adults with them, which is fabulous. I mean, the more we can get parents involved and in the door, it's great. And then Leanne held a hearse today. I actually attempted to get to South Clinton today, and there were so many cars parked, I didn't even attempt to get up here, but it was a great day.
It was great. We had over 130 this year or so.
So, and lots of compliments on the food. Guys, SFE is doing an amazing job with the food. I mean, the food was good, it was hot, the portion sizes were good. They did a chicken pasta that actually Jamie and I tried in their meatball sub. It was delicious, so it was a great day. I want to congratulate, even though she's out sick, congratulations to Jenna Sharp. She actually has been chosen to serve on the NIET Educator Advisory Board, and this is a national board that she was chosen to participate in. It will be a two-year term, and she will meet with a team of people across the nation where she gets to share the good work that is happening in Clinton City Schools. But then she'll also get information about what is happening in terms of school continuous improvement across the nation and bring that back to our district. So this is a great opportunity that she will have. I wanted to update you quickly on some capital projects. Shaun is currently setting the dates for the painting and completing the ceiling and lighting in the auditorium. Our painters are ready to go, and I have challenged Joey Smith with the colors, of which he has brought a panel of colors.
I have them with me tonight. I wanted to see if we could maybe get into a fight.
They don't look the same.
Do they look the same from back there?
Pretty much.
Okay.
So we will be gathering, and we will be doing an unofficial vote on the color for the auditorium, but that is going to happen fairly quickly, the painting is, and then we'll move on to the ceiling. The bleachers, we will begin the RFP process. Also, the city of Clinton actually has issued the RFP for the asphalt parking where we've extended the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot behind Clinton Elementary. That RFP is going to be due by September the 18th, so as soon as that is awarded, hopefully we will have an estimated date of when the winner of that can pave that, because we're kind of at the mercy of that getting paved before we can move forward with our new CES playground. And then everybody's favorite subject is E-Rate, because we're not jaded or we don't have any post-traumatic stress from E-Rate whatsoever. But it is time to RFP our E-Rate services. And for those of you who may not know what E-Rate is, that is the government funding that we receive from an organization called USAC, and that actually helps pay a significant portion of our internet for students. And so it actually pays about 80% of our internet services for students. It is a very convoluted process, and so Metro Nashville, after the Sweetwater Consortium and that situation, Metro Nashville took over the consortium, and so they did the RFP five years ago, of which we were a part of, and it has been very successful. And Metro Nashville has really, they're really following the letter to the law, doing a great job. So that is going to take place again this year. I have turned in our letter of agency to once again be a part of that consortium and let Metro Nashville kind of lead the pack on that. Most school districts across the state of Tennessee have jumped on this consortium. So the RFP process will take place throughout this year, and then the new contract for internet providers will begin in the 25-26 school year. Then I also would be remiss if I did not take a moment to thank Clinton Police Department for their support that they have given Clinton City Schools this week. I do want to go on record and knock on wood and be very, very thankful and blessed. Clinton City Schools did not receive not one single one substantiated threat during the course of the social media hype this week. Other schools were not as lucky, and all of them have been found, you know, not substantiated. But to say that it has put teachers and parents on edge this week would be an understatement. And I know that we have had groups of parents that have just really, really supported us. They have prayed over our schools. They have offered, you know, positive comments and hugs and love throughout the week, knowing the stress that teachers, students, and parents are under. But Clinton City Schools is very blessed with the partnership of Clinton Police Department. They have had added extra presence in our schools. They have, I've been in conversation with them multiple times every day, as they have kept and been very transparent about not what only is happening in our area but in our region. David Massengill with Homeland Security, I've been in contact with him every day, and we really do have a very good partnership, and I cannot say enough about how seriously Clinton Police Department takes the safety and security of our schools and schools, kids in schools. And so I know that they are getting weary of a lot of the nonsense that is happening, but they continue to take every single thing very, very seriously until it is proven that it is not substantiated. So we continue to be blessed. And then wanted to let you know, if you haven't hopped on Facebook, we have started a banner fundraiser for The Blaze. As you know, our dear friend ET Stamey, who we still hold near and dear to our heart, he was a major person who did our fundraising for us with The Blaze. And we try to offer these Blaze well-rounded activities without having to take any money from instruction, so that depends on community support. So we are doing a banner drive to raise money to help pay for coaching stipends, materials, and supplies, and the scholarships for students who can't afford uniforms or needed things to participate. And so that is started now, and we will be accepting banner sponsorships until September the 30th, because we want to have banners up for Meet the Blaze Night. But the banners will be in the gym, not only for all of the basketball games, but for the archery events and for the rocket drone racing and all of the things that take place in the gym throughout the year. So if you happen to know, an organization business, or if Emily, families can sponsor too, we will be happy to, we'll, anybody, we'll take anybody's sponsorship. And then last but not least, midterms go home tomorrow. So there's probably going to be some really happy families and maybe a few not happy families, but midterms will go home tomorrow. Any questions for me? That concludes my report.
All right. Anything further to add? Great things are still happening at Clinton City Schools. I'll declare this meeting adjourned.